Call this meeting in order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Let the record reflect that all board members are present this evening. First, I want to thank everybody for coming out and being such a late evening for the meeting. So it just was schedules. It just had to be that way, but we'll try not to do this hardly ever. This is the first time I know we've had one this late, so we'll try not to do that again. But welcome. I understand there are no visitor comments for today. So we'll start with the consent agenda. In that, we have approval of minutes. The November 4th public hearing regarding teachers collective bargaining, the special meeting of November 10th, and the regular board meeting of November 21st. We also have the treasurer's report for November of 2022. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gross wages on November the 11th, 2022, for $685,187.68. Gross wages on November 25th, 2022, for $908,276.70. I'm sorry. $76.17 for claims of prepays for November 1st through November 30th, 2022, is $1,029,713.68 for regular vouchers on December the 19th, 2022, for $376,400.52 for claims of for sale vouchers on 12/20/2022, $15,110.62 for a grand total of $3,014,688.67. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have donations. We have one donation this evening, $2,000 from City Church for All Nations, and that will be used for the Student Assistance Fund. We also have personnel resignations, retirements, nonrenewals, leaves and terminations, D-1 through D-7, and appointments and transfers, E-1 through E-6. And Dr. Sanders, there's a trip you'd like to tell us about.
Yes, so the show choir at Edgewood Junior High School, Mini Warehouse, would like to go to St. Louis, Missouri, May 5th through the 7th. There will be a tour of performances that will include one of the St. Louis Cardinals games. I think that's pretty cool. Ballpark Village and Union Station. They are going through music travel consultants. This will be a combination of performing, educational experiences, and this being a reward for the students' hard work. We have an awesome choir director in Kyra Campbell. He's doing a great job, and so I would recommend approval for that overnight trip.
Okay. So that being the consent agenda, do we have motion?
I'll make approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions or comments?
The St. Louis trip is something that was regularly done before the pandemic, I believe, so this is just kind of getting back into the routine.
The, I actually have been with Mini Warehouse to St. Louis for a trip just like this. And music travel's been, we've been partnered with them for a long time. They do a really good job of helping maximize the experiences for the amount of time. So, but yes, this is something that was done for many years. It used to be that they partnered with the jazz band, the junior high jazz band, I think, but it looks like it's just many this time. Anything further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll have the Assistant Superintendent's report.
All right. You guys should have the cash flow over there in front of you on your tables. So with the education fund, things are going very well to the end of December. I adjusted our tuition support payment for December, which now includes the reconciliation for the updated accounts for CTE and the honors grant, which both went up. Our honors grant went up quite a bit, which again is based on the honors performance that we did at the high school level. And then our CTE funding went up a little bit as well, which is again based on the CTE classes that are eligible for funding that our students are enrolled in. So both of those went up, which is part of the reason why you see that December tuition support number being higher. They back pay that based on the start of the school year to now. DLGF approved our additional appropriation request from last month, so that's reflected in the appropriation amount there at the bottom of your cash flow. And then I will have a 2023 outlook and a closeout of 2022 for you as January is regular for me. The debt service fund. Really, the only thing that was in there was that the trust, we had a trustee fee that we paid on one of our bonds there in the month of November. I did update our December numbers there as far as projected revenue based on our December settlement of taxes. We got our Form 22 from the county office as far as what to expect as far as dispersment this month. So I went ahead and updated those numbers to reflect that Form 22. Moving on into the operations fund. The projections were extremely accurate from last month. I don't know if I could hit it any more accurately than what I had it at the last time. As I was doing the cash flow, I was like, wow, I nailed that. That was pretty good. Again, updated December's numbers on December settlement. That again was based on the Form 22. That comes for all of those funds for debt service and operations when they send that out. We did not experience the amount of circuit breaker loss that the circuit breaker report had. It was a little bit better. And it's kind of been like that typically. They send us a circuit breaker report, and it says that, you know, we sometimes have on there as much as about $250,000 in circuit breaker loss, and it was about $100,000 less than that, which is a good thing for our fund numbers, which is the primary reason why you see an increase in what the year-end cash balance was from what last month was because of that change in what our actual December settlement was. Funds are in great shape. I did want to give you an update on our 1782 notice. We did receive that from our DLGF rep. We reviewed that with Chad Blacklock on the CEFL team. We ended up asking them to take $650,000 off of our levy to reduce our tax rate down to a total rate of $1.07, which is about a penny less total rate than what we had last year. And again, we just asked them to take $650,000 out of our cash balance, so we'll eat into about $650,000 of cash, which means we levy less, which obviously means less taxes instead of, you know, people paying that out. So we did ask them to make that, and again, it was $1.07 is what we're going to land at. And they already sent back that review, DLGF went ahead and signed it, and we're good to go. So we'll wait for our budget order to come in. But I did want to give you an update on that for the budget.
Any questions?
So we remain, over the last three years, have we been lower or lowering or going down by the end of year?
Yeah. Two years ago, we were a little over $1.08. We went down about half a penny last year and then about almost a full penny this year.
Okay. Okay. And one quick thing, I think I know the answer, but on the debt service fund operations, the disparity between June and December, is that because a lot of people pay their whole year taxes?
Typically, the honors office, they typically try to get us as much as they can of what our levy is. And so when they see our budget order, it says, here's, you know, X amount of dollars is what you should collect over the course of this year. And so usually, that first dispersment is right around 60%. And that's fairly, fairly normal every single year. It's about 60% of our draw on the first draw every year.
And as you say, getting people paying the entire year is...
Well, that's what I wondered, yeah.
Yeah. That makes a large part of that difference.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Now, consideration to approve a quote for the junior high cooler and warmer replacement. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so this is through food service. And so Vicki is wanting to purchase the double sided pass-through coolers and warmers for the junior high kitchen. This is just to replace older units that she's having difficulty finding parts for. And she is able to pay for this through the 800 fund, so that's where it will get paid for from. She is awarding the quote to the CMT Design and Equipment Company, which was the low quote of the three quotes that she solicited for. So with that, I'll take any questions and ask for your approval.
Have motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we have the consideration to approve the quote for Combi ovens.
Yeah, so this is another one through food service for Vicki Coffey. This is for Edgewood Intermediate School and Edgewood Primary School. Both of those units are 20 years old. I'm pretty sure they're original to the building. So it's about that time that we need to replace them. And again, this is something that she did it out after three quotes. The winning bid was to Tinkles Restaurant Supplies. And again, this will be paid for through the 800 fund, which is the school service lunch fund.
Okay. Have motion?
Move approval. I'll second.
Any questions?
Say one quick question, and that was that? Two years ago, we bought, she bought that bus for that mobile. This is the same fund, right? That's what I thought. So thank you for, Ms. Coffey, for our hard work with this.
Okay. Nothing further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have a quote for EEECC indoor playset. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so we've been doing some great things down there at preschool as far as just upgrading the play equipment for the little ones. And so this is another thing that, you guys remember that Bill Lernroth grant that Matt Woodman had gotten about a year and a half ago? This is another one of those things that that grant is able to pay for. And this is an indoor, high-quality playset that would go in that multipurpose space, kind of where, when you're in there, they have that play equipment there now, which definitely, probably some of it's seen its better days. And so this is more a commercial grade set that she had designed specifically for that area. It's a single source because there's not another company that we can go out and say, hey, give us a quote on this. This is just a one-of-a-kind thing. But again, obviously, it's over that threshold, so we're bringing it here for your guys' approval. But it is something that's not being paid for through corporation funds, but fortunately enough, to be paid for through a grant that we have received. So we're pretty excited about continuing to just create great spaces for our little ones to get out and move and exercise and learn some body control. I know I've got a little one that's jumping off stuff, so we're, they'll have a lot of fun on it. We're excited about that.
Have motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
Just, I walked past around the outdoor play space, and saw they got the fence fenced in, it looks good. And I liked the shelter area. And I was looking in the window at the multipurpose room at the EEECC.
Yeah, we got some tables underneath there, so they have some outdoor classroom space. So she, Heather Kense, went out there, and she's finding different tables and different stuff put underneath there to make that just a good functional space for the kids and the teacher to go outside on those nice days. So we're excited to see how that space just continues to develop. And again, one of those things, these grants have come in very handy for this.
Would I add too? Mr. Irwin had mentioned that...
They're also going to have foam mats. You're purchasing foam mats for underneath it? And that's part of that grant as well, down the road?
Yeah, she'll get some matting to put underneath it just to make that surface a little bit, have a little bit more give to it, right? So you'll have a little bit bigger playset there, just something that absorbs some of that shock as kids are moving and playing, if someone chirps and falls. It just makes it easier on the kids' hands and knees, elbows, all that stuff.
Okay, now we'll come out of that grant as well. Okay. Perfect.
Further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an addendum to the Pepsi contract. Dr. Sanders.
Yeah, so the board approved the Pepsi contract back in September. And since that approval, we've identified, between RBB and Pepsi, we've identified two areas that we would like to improve the contract with. And one of them is very simple, and that's changing the beginning term of the contract to August 1st. Since the last contract ends on July 31st, it makes sense to start the new contract on August 1st. The other change is the contract mistakenly referred to both the Free Product Support Fund and the Gatorade Fund as the Gatorade Support Fund. So they're really two different things, and so we're wanting to amend the contract. Christine has worked with Pepsi on making these changes, and you have a copy of that before you tonight. And Christine has approved this amendment.
Have motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions or comments? Now, this amendment does not change any obligations on behalf or benefits. It's just helping clear a few things up, so. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we have consideration of contract for orientation and mobility services. Dr. Sanders.
Yeah, so we would like the board to approve this contract with an organization called Bridging the Blind Gap. They will provide services for orientation and mobility to students who are identified with blind or low vision. These services go beyond the scope of what our teachers can do now and requires a specialization in their certificates. So it's a good thing that we will be able to partner with this organization. The cost would be $90 per hour for the services, and we would bill Medicaid for those services. And the contract has been approved by Ferguson Law.
Move approval of the contract with Orientation and Mobility Services for Orientation and Mobility Services.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion does carry. And now we have a contract for Propio Language Services. Dr. Sanders.
Yes. So once again, we're asking the board to approve this contract with Propio Language Services for our English language families. I think that's a pretty cool opportunity here. Oftentimes, when our teachers or staff are meeting with students and their families who are English language learners, there's sometimes a language barrier in meetings, ILP meetings, enrollment, just general parent-teacher conferences. So this would be, we'd be able to call a phone number or Zoom with a language interpreter. And the first time we do this, I want to be there to see this in action because I think it's pretty cool. So this would be a page you use service. And Mrs. Anderson, who couldn't be here tonight, said that she estimated the cost to be less than $1,000. This would be paid out of the NESP grant, and we generally receive about $4,000 out of the NESP grant, so this will well cover this fee.
Have motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions, comments?
Just that, when I was teaching, it was a big hole. And I'm so happy that we are addressing it because I know I had students that had very little command of the English language that needed help, and I certainly could not. Although I will say that I was impressed when I met a student from the Philippines whose first language was Tagalog. And darn, Karen Nastrom didn't bring an English Tagalog dictionary over for us. Those were hard.
Nothing further? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have permission to balance appropriation and funds as cash and appropriation will allow. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so this is just yearly ask of the board. Just allows our treasurer to move around appropriation within certain funds to certain specific lines. Obviously, our budgets are sometimes hundreds of lines long. And so it just allows us to move that appropriation around within those lines just to even things out. Again, it's just routine year-end business in our business department for our treasurer. So with that, I ask for your approval.
Have motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. It's nice being close. I can look real quick to see if he was... Okay. Now we have consideration to approve Bose McKinney and Evans' invoice for the 2022 GO bond. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so this was something that I was just hearing on the side of caution there. That I was pretty sure this was something that was a part of the approval through the GO bond process. But since the bill came out after the fact, the funds being dispersed to us for the GO bond instead of prior to, I felt like it was, you know, we were right here on a board meeting. It made sense just to give you guys formal approval on it again, just to be safe on this. And so this is for Jacob McClellan Services. This is not an extra fee or anything else like that. It's just because the invoice came in after the fact. Felt the right thing to do was just to put it before you guys for formal approval. So this is for his services for the 2022 GO bond.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Turn your page. Okay. Next up is consideration to approve radio and camera purchase for new school buses. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so months ago, we had ordered our 2023 school buses, which thankfully that we did at that time, because who knows if we would have got them on time if we hadn't. So kudos to Audrey for having foresight to make sure that we got that done in time. Probably saved us a lot of money as well because vehicle prices have continued to escalate. But typically, a part of that are the radios and cameras that go in those buses. And so they sent us, again, kind of similar to what I was just talking about, usually is embedded within that. This came after the fact as far as the price for the radios and cameras that go inside of those buses. And so they sent those separately. So that's why we're bringing them here for your approval. And these will go to the five buses that we ordered earlier this year for 2023. These are for those five buses. It'll get split out the exact same way that we paid for those five buses. Some of that's from the GO bond in 2021, and some of that is from the operations fund through our regular replacement cycle. So with that, I'm asking for your approval for the radios and cameras that are for the new school buses.
I'll move to approve the radio and camera purchase for the new school buses.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Permission to advertise contracted bus routes for the 2023 to 2027. These are four-year contracts. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so we're in the last year of our current contracted bus routes, which means it's time for us to get started on bidding out and putting those routes out to bid for the next round, just so that, A, we can give people ample time to say, hey, I've secured this, making sure that we have ourselves ready to go as far as the routes that we're covering and what we're doing staffing-wise. But we are bidding out, we're asking to bid out nine routes, which is less than what we had done prior to. Again, about a year or so ago, we absorbed one of the contracted routes in because that driver can no longer do that route. So we brought that one in-house. And then again, we ordered five new buses this past year instead of two on replacement. So we're taking back three more of those other ones, which leaves us with nine routes that we still would like to bid out instead of the 13 that we had had in the past. And then also, this is something we've worked very closely with Christine and Ferguson Law. So she's looked over the bid specs, the routes throughout our internal team, Audrey, Dr. Sanders, everybody else, just looking through that to make sure that the wording was right. There wasn't any omissions, things that we thought of over the last four years. Obviously, a lot's changed since the last time we've done these bus contracts. I don't think I need to say more about that. But just looking through what's changed in the last four years, what types of, you know, updates do we need to do. Some of the bigger changes that we made was just that contracted drivers will carry $5 million in insurance coverage with $1 million. They can do $1 million with a $4 million umbrella. We were trying to look into the reasonability of that as far as what it would cost to actually have that type of coverage. Again, that $5 million goes back to what our coverage claims are as a school, is what we would be liable for under the tort claims. So it just covers us, it covers the school corporation. And so in doing it that way, it was reasonable in cost to be asked for that. The other thing was, again, the contract drivers will be doing the same training and videos and different things like that that our bus drivers do, and just including that in there because it wasn't clear during the last one. Obviously, that's something that we'll need to continue to do. And then again, this, a third one that I thought was important to note was that we did say that contract drivers could have a bus older than 16 years as long as it passes inspection and they show proof that they've ordered a newer bus. Again, some of them, they're looking into getting newer buses. Thankfully, we ordered ours earlier, but let's say they order one and it doesn't come in for eight months, and they have a bus that still runs, it passes inspection by state police. It's still safe to be on the road with our kids for now. We know that a newer one's coming. We'll allow them to continue to use that so they can provide the service that they're being contracted to do. So with that, I'll take any questions. I'm asking for your approval.
Do I have motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move to second. Any questions, comments?
I just had a couple quick. On the nine routes that we're putting up for bid, I looked at, I saw the different charted stops and so forth. Has that changed any? Did you guys adjust that any, or is it just the same as what it's been in the past?
Right now, I think it's pretty similar to what it is right now. I think Audrey did put some add-in in there, just a little bit of fluff either way because there's times where that route throughout the year, depending on kids coming in and out, you have to make adjustments to that route. So she builds in a little bit of flexibility into that so that, you know, as things change throughout the year, kids come on, kids come off the bus, that route adapts. It doesn't put us where every time a little change needs to be made, all of a sudden, we need to adjust the contract or we need to do something different there. So she's trying to build in some variability there, knowing that it can change a little bit and knowing where we have housing starts going on and how that might be affected where a route might need to make a turn here instead of turning here.
Okay. And then what...
It's one of those areas where... I think experience pays off quite a bit in that Audrey really knows our routes, and she knows how to tweak them and then adjust the contracts accordingly.
I know some of those far-reaching areas of our district are pretty difficult to get to, and that's been allocated for.
Right.
So, and then when will we bring these back to the board? In May?
So hopefully, on the timeline, so on that, in the packet there is a timeline. I think it was a February board meeting, I think, would be when we'd come back for board approval to accept those bids. So we'll have to go through the process, go through the bid opening, possibly do an auction of the routes before eventually coming back and asking for the board to approve the routes.
Are you projecting some competition for these routes?
Yeah, I think we'll have, I think we'll have a few people bid on them. You don't really know until the bids come in, but we definitely, obviously, know people are interested, some of our contract route owners now. We'll definitely probably bid again. And so I think we might have one or two that have made contact with us with some questioning of, hey, what's going on with this and want some information? So I would imagine we'll have a couple of people bidding on them, yeah.
Okay.
And the bid to be like, say, January, I think, right?
I believe so. I'd prefer back to the timeline, yeah. But we'll make all that very clear in there when we put everything out. Here's the timeline, here's when you'll need this back by. And the bid specs list all that out as well as far as when they need to have their bids into, turned into the office.
I think that's when the bids will be available.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's...
Not when they're, when they're available to be picked up.
They do on the February 3rd.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. So do we have permission to advertise? We have motion? Or do we already do that? We did that. We did, okay. No more questions or comments? It's late. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Permission to reserve fuel prices. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so we did this, I think the last time we did this was maybe two years ago. I don't think we did this last year. Audrey watches the fuels futures pretty closely as far as what prices are doing. And so what we try to do every once in a while, if we feel like, you know, we can get a good deal, we can reserve fuel and say, hey, we're going to buy X amount over the next so many months. We lock in a price, and A, that's budget-friendly, and B, that can save us a lot of money. Obviously, fuel prices have been pretty volatile. Within the last year, we paid as much as $6 a gallon. And then right now, I think prices, last week, they were sitting around $4.30 a gallon for diesel, which is the majority of what we use. We do use regular unleaded as well, but the majority of what we use is diesel fuel. So we've been watching that pretty closely. And so what we're looking to reserve out to is probably the end of this school year is what we're looking at. And so, like I said, just, that's a huge difference between, you know, $6 a gallon and $4.30 a gallon when we're buying tens of thousands of gallons of fuel. And so, like I said, just, that's a huge difference between, you know, $6 a gallon and $4.30 a gallon when we're buying tens of thousands of gallons of fuel. Makes a big difference.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Move seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'm trying to come up with a really good idea.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, consideration to approve the classified contract. Mr. Irwin?
Yeah, so this is one that was not brought to you guys last month. This social worker, she was getting, she's getting ready to transition to an IDOE given license, which would turn her into a bargaining unit member. Right now, she still doesn't have that IDOE given license, so she's still a classified employee. We thought that she would have that license by now, but that process is taking a little bit longer than what we anticipated. So we felt the right thing to do was to go ahead and update her contract now, classified contract, just like we did everybody else's in her area this past month. And then when we get to that point where she gets her IDOE given license and all that stuff in, we'll go ahead and make the change for her into the bargaining unit and get her transition there. We were trying to do, avoid doing a new contract followed by a new contract a week later and then the confusion of that and running that through payroll in the offices. But it's just been taking a little bit longer. So we want to go ahead and get this done now so that we can make this update and have her not waiting on that any longer.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll say.
Move seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have consideration to approve the Five Star Technology Solutions LLC service level agreement. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, board, this is an annual agreement that you're asked to approve every year with Five Star. They provide vital backend engineering for our server and network and also technical support. We've really, over the last few years, streamlined this agreement down to what we need and the critical services that Five Star can provide that our team just doesn't have time to do. And so it's very important that we continue this agreement. It does cost $4,250 a month. And Rick's here tonight if you have any questions also for him.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll say.
Any questions or comments?
Just wanted to follow up with Rick there. Three, about three years ago, our goal, when we first hired you, our goal was to try to break away from Five Star, correct?
As much as possible.
And we've done that down, down, if I did the math, we're down to maybe one full-time person that we're paying them.
We're, we have no full-time staff, Five Star staff members on site.
Right, but what we're paying them would equate to that, but the, what they're providing us is way more than one full-time person.
Yes.
Okay, that's, so you're happy the way it's going then? Perfect.
Rick had to explain to me what, he didn't have to. I talked to Rick about how the services they provided are...
The backend.
Are the backend. It's some services that we don't have, need a full-time person for in a variety of services. So having them do it gives us a bank of people at our disposal and not just one individual. Did I get that right? Okay.
Do they have any physical equipment that we depend on off-site? No, okay.
All onsite.
It's all onsite, okay. That's why, I wasn't for sure about that either. All right, perfect.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Our last action item of the evening is to approve the 2023 school board calendar. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so every year, at the December meeting, we set out our calendar for our school board meetings for the next year. So for 2023, I just want to highlight a few meetings that you might want to take note of because it's just slightly changing in the date. But the first one will be our board organizational meeting, which will be on January 9th. And it's on the 9th. Usually it would be the week before, but the way New Year's Day lands this year, we needed to push it back a week. And then on January 17th, we'll have our board of finance meeting and also our regular school board meeting. That'll be on Tuesday, January 17th, because Monday is Martin Luther King Day and we will not be in school. The other two dates that I wanted to note for you is the March school board meeting will be a week later, March 27th. And then the October school board meeting will also be a week later, October 23rd. And that's because of fall and spring break that our treasurer doesn't really have enough time to do month-end and also board prep before we head off for fall break or spring break. And so we're pushing those two board meetings back a week to give her more time to prepare. So that'd be March, March school board meeting and the October school board meeting. And this will be posted on our website. And so ask for your approval.
I'll move approval of the 2023 school board calendar.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have a superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to go back and talk a little bit about the incident that happened on December 8th. As a superintendent, some past experiences, experiences that I've had really makes me take school safety to another level in terms of, when I was in a previous school district, there was a actual school shooting. And, and I look back on that time, it was a very challenging and difficult time. I had the opportunity in the week after that the student was shot of visiting the student in the critical care unit, hugging on the mother and calling her several times to support her. So because of that, it's just something that hits home to me that we need to really make sure that, that we're doing all we can in our school corporation to prevent something like that from ever happening here. And so the incident last, on December 8th, is, for me, just reinforces the reasons why we have been working so hard on school safety. I think that just indicates that really no matter how hard you work at school safety, that these situations can happen and you have to be prepared. And you have to learn from those experiences. God forbid that they, they were, were to happen again. Since that incident on December 8th, Matt Irwin and I, we've met several times with the junior high administration. We met with each of our principals from all the schools to talk about lessons that were learned from that experience. We debriefed with our school resource officer, talked about ways that maybe we can, if that was ever happen again, maybe we could respond differently and in a better way to keep our kids and our staff safe. Matt and I made ourselves available last Tuesday, was it, Matt? We made ourselves available from 7:00 to 8:30 in the morning and then 2:30 to 3:30 to the junior high staff that if anybody wanted to come down, ask questions, share concerns, provide support for administration. And so I think that was really helpful, I think for the staff, but also for us. And then I've just had several emails and phone calls and visits with parents. And you, you, in those situations, you're doing your best in the moment to keep everybody safe. And you're making decisions on communication and what to say. In this case, Matt Irwin and I were on our way to Franklin High School for an insurance trust meeting. And so once we got the call, we obviously turned right around. And so I'm driving the car back to Ellisville and Matt's writing the statement that we put out. We're calling Christine Bartlett. We're calling the principals. And then, and so we're trying to make decisions on what we think's best for in terms of communication, in terms of whether to go into a shelter in place or what's the best action to take. But since then, when we have those conversations with all these key people, you learn from some things. And one of the things that we learned was, is really communication. And communication is a key in a lot of different things in life that we need to, in every organization, that we need to make sure we're doing the best we can at. And one of them, the lessons that we learned is, as we said, we're, we're driving back and we've got this statement written that we wanted to send out to parents. And so we sent it to our communications coordinator, Brittany Tucker, to send out through Harmony, not realizing that maybe not a lot of people know who Brittany Tucker is, although she's an awesome person. They might not know that as opposed to pay attention to it as opposed to a message from me. And so that's one of the changes that we've already made is if that ever was to happen again, Brittany now has my username and password for Harmony and so she could send that message out directly from me. And then people will pay a little more, might pay a little more attention to it. And then throughout the day, you know, there is just some areas of communication that, that I think, looking back, that we might have been able to do a little bit better job keeping the staff a little better informed throughout the day. And, you know, at the time, you know, the rationale for not doing an all-call was it was fairly early in the day. And I didn't really, I didn't want to alarm our students, especially our primary students unnecessarily and for the whole school day. So we didn't do an all-call for that reason because my, my reasoning was really that we could send out an email to parents and then when the students got home at the end of the day, that the parents could have a one-on-one conversation with their own children at home. And that would be more productive than doing something early in the morning and then having the students upset all day. So we tried to, we're trying to balance, finding that balance of making sure that we're providing students and parents and staff with the right type of communication without causing panic and alarm and fear. And it's always just a fine line of where we would decide to do more communication, less communication based on a situation. And when we come back from winter break, we will be talking to, as an administrative team, on some of these lessons learned that we could be prepared, better prepared for next time. We do that anyways. We, and I think my letter, email I sent out to parents, I tried to outline that, that we do take school safety very seriously. It's a topic at every meeting and we discuss different scenarios, like the situation that happened on the 8th. We discuss, how would we respond to that? So each administrator, each director at the meeting will, will respond to a different scenario and say, well, here's what I would do in that situation. And that helps us to be better prepared. So I just put a statement here in my report tonight that RBB CSC will continue to be relentless. And I use that word relentless because we have to, it's serious enough that we have to be relentless in our commitment to provide Edgewood students and staff with a safe school environment. And so we will continue to do our best to make sure that we provide a, not only a safe school environment, but one that is welcoming to the students and it's going to generate more learning. So I just want to do a little follow-up on that tonight. The other, the other item on my mind was just, and you could see here in my report, I was just so impressed with what our students did at every school, high school, junior high, intermediate, primary school and giving to others between Thanksgiving and Christmas. I'm not going to go through each of those examples tonight, but it's an impressive list of, of ways that our students and staff are putting our vision into action. The vision, of course, being caring, daring, preparing. And you could see these list of items here are definitely an example of caring. And then finally, I'm just really excited to be in this building, our new administration office, our first school board meeting in the new school board room. And when we made the decision to build this new administration office, we did so to make sure that we had a well-defined entrance. In our old administration office, you, you would walk in, you were not sure who to talk to, would go left or right. And so it's very clear, you walk in and Robin May will be right there to greet you and, and help you with what your needs are. It's going to be more conducive for doing business better. Just the layout of the offices will make us be more efficient and effective. We've placed people in certain locations to make that happen. So I'm really excited to get that going. We started moving in people in today. Thanks, our technology department's hustling to make that happen. We moved over Brittany Tucker, our communications coordinator, Susan Shockney, who's our HR specialist, and John Kiefer, who's our payroll person. He, the three of them moved over. In terms of moving over, I mean like moving telephone technology and the equipment. Tomorrow, Matt and I and one other person tomorrow. Jeffrey Anderson will be moving over tomorrow. So we have a definite, definite plan of moving people over that is really according to the, how much technology is involved in the move. So that's going pretty well. And then we just really wanted a school board room that, that will be representative of really the kind of excellence that we are committed to for our students. We wanted this school board room to be representative of that vision, to really make a difference in the lives of kids. We'll not only be using this for school board meetings, but be using it for professional development, for maybe if the Chamber of Commerce wanted to have a, an event here, if we are having an evening meeting with parents. We want to, with every space that we've added here at RBB, we're trying to do our best to maximize the use of that facility. And so this will be the same opportunity for us. So that's my report for tonight.
Thank you. RPBEA comments? Do not believe anybody's here this evening for that. So we'll have board member comments and we'll start with Ms. Jacobs.
Well, I want to say to Jerry and Matt, thank you so much for going through, you know, the events of the 8th. I know that that is very concerning, you know, to our community and I think we did an excellent job. I think it's very difficult for people on the outside to know what is really happening in real time. And so, you know, for parents to, and I'm a parent too, so it's easy for me to sit back and kind of think about this as well, is, you know, our SRO officers that are in our school, they're phenomenal. They know what they're doing. They're going to work very hard, very diligently to keep our, you know, students and our faculty safe. And I think they did an excellent job with this situation. And I applaud them. So the other thing is, again, with our donations, the monetary donations from the food items that the students were able to bring in to our community is just amazing. So thank you, thank you, thank you for that. And I hope everybody have a wonderful holiday season.
Mr. Irwin?
Thank you, sir. I figured I was next.
Angie, thank you so much for recognizing.
Angie, thank you so much for recognizing the SROs. They did a wonderful job, no doubt. I think it just showed the need for a well-trained police officer to be on location as quickly as possible. I can't believe we're approving the 2023 school year calendar, but that's the way it is. Time marches on, but hope you all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
I did what Mr. Irwin and Ms. Jacobs said about, thank you for your communications during the December eighth event. And one comment I wanted to make on that to Dr. Sanders and Matt, it's, it's kind of, it's neat, you gotta have one adult, one adult, whether it's a bus driver, custodian, teacher, an aide, or a teach, or someone of that nature that a kid feels comfortable going to. So I felt, I'm glad that that young person felt comfortable going to an adult and then the process started from there. So I hats off to that, to that young person that did that. Again, happy holidays to everybody. It's nice to see everybody tonight without being blinded by the lights of the auditorium. I don't feel like I'm under interrogation tonight. So this is, this is awesome, beautiful and, and good luck on the transition to the new building.
Mr. Gamoss?
As they said, I appreciate what the administration did on the eighth. And speaking of SROs, I am excited to welcome one of my former students, Jason Brown is the new secondary SRO.
He's looking forward to it.
He'll be terrific. I think he's perfect for it. I'm going to ask everybody, especially our students, to please take care as we go into this. The weather smacks us in the face this weekend and I hope everybody has a happy Hanukkah and a super solstice and a Merry Christmas and a Kua Kwanzaa and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. I just want to say, you know, it's concluding a year, it's been a trying year in many ways, but I believe we've come through those trials very successfully. And I believe that we've done a lot of wonderful, positive things this year. I think our corporation is, you know, every month we meet, we keep pushing, pushing and making, making it better. And I do appreciate the administrations for, how they dealt with December eighth. I appreciate the school resource officers, but most of all, I appreciate the student who is willing to stand up and say something when they see something, when they hear something. To me, they're the true hero of making that not be something that could have been really bad. So with that, I wish you a Merry Christmas and have a wonderful holiday season and this meeting's adjourned.